So BOHS number six, board meeting for today, which is August 22. And so that people know at home, we just finished approximately a two-hour work session, kind of hearing action planning and things like that for this upcoming year and beyond. And we had an executive session on a personnel matter that we just came out of. And we're going to start our regular meeting with the clerks' report and the minutes of the July 18 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. We'll give it to Sean and Rob second. How's that sound? All right, so the minutes of July 2nd have been moved to second. Any petitions, deletions, corrections? Yeah, Sean?
Yes, I think it was because I mumbled when I gave the BAMS report. But the minutes actually say Middlebury Institute, and I think it's sort of been Middle Grades Institute.
Yep.
And I think it was because I didn't make myself clear.
Enunciation.
Enunciation.
Middle Grades Institute.
Okay. All right. Any other additions, deletions, corrections, amendments to the minutes of July 18? Seeing none? All those in favor approving the minutes of July 18 as amended, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other, okay, great. Those who passed. Any other communications for the board tonight? Okay. I know there's stuff in relation to some resignations and things like that, but we'll do that later. There's no groups or individual visitors. So why don't we move, is there a motion to go into consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, move to second, second there by Russ. All right. All those in favor of entering consent agenda, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Finance committee last Thursday, July 21. We approved warrants of June 29. Warrant numbers 1224, 1225, 1226, 1227, 1229, 1230, and 1231. And warrant number 1232, warrant of June 30, the amount of $8,226.28. And warrant since July 11th, number 1,001, 1,002, 1,003, and 1,004. And the amount of $60,102.4. And payrolls of July 8, the amount of $404,417.77. And payroll of July 22, the amount of $422,641.9. We also reviewed the internal controls. And we discussed the Asian Studies Program.
If there are others on the agenda.
But we were going to meet this morning, and we didn't meet this morning, so we haven't reviewed those yet.
Okay. So we'll be meeting next Monday morning, and we'll do our annual site visit to catch up on work that's been done over the summer, and projects and so forth.
When is it? What time is that?
Eight. Monday the 29, that'd be the 29 at 8:00 a.m. We're meeting out in front, right, aren't we, by the main entrance?
In lobby D.
Yeah, that could be interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll stop by for that.
Swing on by.
Where is this?
Okay. Anything else for building, finance, and transportation?
Well, maybe I should mention, because it does, it is related to finance, the Wedstone Association. Bob has been following that pretty closely, so every year we pay a maintenance fee for three lots. So I said that I would go to their association fee, I mean, their associated meeting, so I went there. Unfortunately, there was a little mix-up in the time. It was, I had been told 6:30, I get there, no, it's not until 7:00, so I cooled my jets for a half hour, then I came back. And then, for some reason, they didn't have a quorum, so I waited until almost 6:30. And unfortunately, at that time, I got a telephone call that said that a former BOHS student had been killed, who was a dear friend and a neighbor of mine. So I interrupted the meeting at that point and said, and laid out exactly what we talked about in the finance meeting, and that is that we would like them to waive their fee. And that if they don't, then we will probably be looking at very aggressively trying to liquidate those three sites. So it was a, it was kind of a tumultuous, unenjoyable time. Thank you.
Okay. Did they, how did they, how was, what was the thought?
Well, we got to get back to Frank and Michael, and I don't know whether they've heard back from them at all yet.
Just a notice from their minutes saying that they'll be in touch with you and I.
And also Frank, too.
Frank.
And the thing that wasn't made clear to me is whether the bill would be forthcoming.
I haven't heard anything in regards.
Probably. Because I emailed back and said it would be good to resolve it prior to receiving the bill, one way or the other, so that we can know how to proceed. And they were receptive. They were actually a wonderful group of people. They were very receptive, and, you know, they felt for my people.
We usually get that invoice right after the first of the year. Seems like I remember seeing that, so we have a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for finance, building, and transportation? All right. WSU finance committee.
We have not met since our last meeting here, but we're meeting Thursday, 5:00 p.m. here in the council room.
Okay. Planning and policy.
Has not met since our last regular meeting.
Teacher curriculum.
Also has not met.
BAMS committee.
We also have not met.
WRCC.
We have not met, but just a question. Ann, are you sliding into Pat's spot on that? She's in a loop for notice of meetings.
Okay.
I have to get your email address.
Sure.
Does that mean you're also in, yeah, who's in planning policy?
Yeah, Ann is joining.
Policy, teacher, and district board.
Okay. All right. WSU Act 46 study committee. Have we met since our last meeting? We have?
I can't.
I don't remember what quarter the meetings were in. Yes, I think it was after our last meeting. Not a hundred. Yes, yes, it was.
Okay. Anything, anybody want to share?
We are continuing to progress with the Articles of Agreement. We meet again on the 25th.
Yeah, this Thursday, yeah.
I expect, I can't speak for the entire committee, but I expect that there will be a vote on the Articles of Agreement to send them to the state at that meeting.
I remember our last meeting, too, there was a lot of conversation about what if in relation to the voting that happened in Vernon. So, and we know what if now, so that we can, people, I think people can start planning accordingly.
Yes, Vernon has voted to exit the union, so.
So, in light of that, because I was at a meeting also, Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if we could have on the agenda, maybe at the next regular board meeting, sort of a discussion of Act 46 and how it will relate directly to this board. And, you know, maybe if people are thinking about running or not thinking about running, I think there's probably a pretty small possibility that it will all pass, and then we'll go forward, you know, after the November 8 vote. But I would like to say that the, if the vote is going, is slated for November 8, which is Election Day, that means that the petitions for anybody that wants to run, and I've said this before in a different time circumstance, that the, these petitions have to be entered the town of Clerks on September 29. So if you're running for the town school board, you have to get 30 signatures. If you're running for the at-large, you have to obtain 60 signatures between now and September 29, which is when you have to first get them to the.
I thought it was October 10th was the last day.
Oh, October 10th, that's the last day. September 29th is the first day that you can.
It's when they're available, you pick them up from the clerk.
Well, hopefully they'll be available like right away, because you have to have all the signatures by the last, the drop dead day is October 10th.
Right.
So I was hoping that we would have a discussion about that. Maybe a central office was here tonight, because I went to a meeting at Guilford, and I expressed the same thing. I mean, it's, time is running short as it did in the spring, so it, you know, it's not going to happen unless everybody pulls on the same order.
Yep. Definitely. I made a note to myself to have that added to the next agenda to have.
And what's our next meeting?
19th of September.
19th of September, I think, yeah. Yep, 19th of September.
So really, the petition should be out prior to that, because if you started on the 19th, and you had to get 60 signature, and then do the last day on the 10th, which I think is a, what is that, a Monday?
October 10th is a Monday, yes.
October 10th, I'm sorry, yes. So that's Monday, so it's not a lot of time.
No.
And people have to make up their minds, whether they want to run.
Just over three minutes.
Get the signatures, so. Concrete trucks are coming.
It's a big move.
You better have those forms ready.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Anything else for consent agenda for this evening? Motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, second. Zachary going to say, but Bob, okay, awesome. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. So let's move on to administrative reports. Why don't we start to fire under the table and work our way this way? BAMS.
Everyone? Kind of a few semi-random topics. You know, school's obviously ready to start here, so our counselors are back in the building, and lots of teachers kind of coming and going and getting themselves prepared. The custodians and other summer staff really, as we said in our previous meeting, really done a great job this year. And we had a little, our annual kind of cookout celebration for them last week, and our admin assistants really did a lot, Jen Minor and Kathy Venice, getting that all prepared, along with, you know, the other administrators and kind of cooking meal up for them, and they really enjoyed that, done an outstanding job, having everything ready. And they're still making finishing touches on the building, but BAMS looks great. We have our opening in service the 25th, and 26th, and 29th. About 50% of that time, teachers are getting ready in their classrooms, and the other 50% is professional development. So each one of us have different schedules for that, how we're doing it. Couple weeks ago, about 10 of us went to developmental designs training, kind of getting ready for this school year. Developmental designs is an approach to middle school kind of pedagogy in the classroom, and has a, as a strong, the best word is an approach to how-to structure advisories, and a lot to do with language and working with kids and in the classroom, and behavioral management stuff. And it's something that a lot of staff had taken training in prior to me getting here, and since then, it's looking like more than 50% of them have taken the training. So I went this year with that group to Keene State, not Keene State, Keeneville School, and it was a four-day training, and really, really came back energized with a lot of great stuff, and I can feel like I can understand what a lot of the teachers are trying to do from taking that approach in their advisories and other settings in schools. So that was exciting. I filled in on some of the other stuff in previous meetings. A couple other personnel things. Julian Egan, who's an English teacher on Team Leo, she is doing her internship with me this fall and spring, this school year. Her administrator, she's finishing her ed leadership program at Keene State, so she's doing her internship with me, and she's going to be helping out a lot and doing kind of extra things beyond her normal role, but she's been great so far, and if you know her, she's a really outstanding person. So I'm excited to have her. She's, she's trying to take on some, some new things in support of, of the school. She's going to help start a new parent, parent group, we're not sure what we're going to call it, but she's kind of doing all the groundwork to get that started at BAMS. Have one resignation, a paraprofessional that disappointed to lose. He was really great, Charlie Rinaldi. You know Charlie, he's been here for a while. Charlie has some family things going on, and so I received this semi-late, but I accepted his resignation with regret. And because there was some reductions in force in the spring, there'll be a recall on that position. Haven't quite ironed out who exactly that will be, but we almost have that nailed down. And last but not least, looking at kind of this school year, we've created a new school leadership team, just kind of restructured how things operate at BAMS. I met with that team, it's a team of six teachers and myself, to look at big school vision and action plans. And we met for full day work about a week ago, and built on some of the work that a team did last year, and also the team at Middle Grades Institute did. And we're kind of honing in some of our goals, but the big ones that are coming out of a lot of the work, working, continue to develop NTSS, but also figuring out ways to take advantage of all the training we have in developmental designs, personalized learning plans, student-led conferences, and the proficiency work. So we're kind of taking those five major things. There are many things that people want, we could be working on, we're trying to hone in a little bit. So good work, but we have a lot more to do with that team. Any questions about what's going on at BAMS? All right.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's move on to high school.
Got some stuff to, you know, I'm not going to do that again. Yeah, the high school, you know, we're gearing up for the beginning of the school year. Needless to say, we're pretty excited, you know, about the end of July, we get a little antsy, and it's like, let's get some students in here, let's get the teachers back. Counselors have started, so they're back, and teachers will be here on Thursday. We're going to spend some time Thursday with a gentleman named Ken Cranberg, and he works with the Vermont Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, and he also works with Life Skills Crisis Intervention. And he's going to work with our faculty on how to de-escalate a classroom, and what it's, you know, gives some strategies and techniques for de-escalation if students get agitated, and kind of working with, you know, how do you keep students in your classroom rather than relying on administrative or safety or counseling interventions in your classroom? So we're kind of excited to have Ken here. He's been here before, doing PBIS work, Positive Behavior Intervention. You know, he's going to spend the day with us Thursday, and then perhaps come back later in the year to kind of reassess, and to kind of continue to work with the faculty. So we're excited to have him here on Thursday. After that, on Friday, we'll have the district meeting. Dr. Stela will preside over, and then from there, our teachers will get some time in the classroom to get ready for the students. Fall sports have started, football started a week ago, all the other sports started today. I had the chance to go visit both soccer teams and field hockey today. It was great to see students. It was also really great to see so many ninth graders coming out for sports. You know, we've told them to get involved and be a part of the school community, and I was talking to John Dimmick, the cross-country coach, and he said, wow, there's a lot of ninth graders here. I've never seen this many. And hearing that from John was great, so, you know, we're excited to have good, strong, robust rosters, and we're looking forward to seeing some great stuff on our fields. Last spring, our school resource officer, Brett Gaylord, resigned from the Wyndham County Sheriff. He's taken another position, working with his uncle over in Chesterfield. And so we've been in flux with our SRO. I've been working with Mark Anderson a little bit this summer to kind of figure out what that's going to look like. We know that ultimately, we would like to get back to having our resource officer be a member of the Broadbent Police Department. We'd kind of like to have that local connection. And Broadbent Police Department is eager to do that as well. I've talked to the chief, and I've talked to a couple of the captains. Their problem for this school year is they simply don't have the manpower yet, and they're not going to. They have, you know, they have a lot of people at the academy, they're working through that. So we are going to sign a contract with the sheriff. One other question has been, you know, the sheriff's department, they work very hard, they have a lot of contracts in the area. I'm kind of working with Mark Anderson to kind of determine how many days a week they can give us coverage. So we may go from a five-day to a four, three-day model. That's still kind of getting sorted out. As you, as you probably know from various communities, you know, the sheriff has, there's a lot of contracts out there, they do a lot of work. And like all law enforcement across our area, you know, they're pretty strapped right now for manpower, so we're going to continue to work on that. Next Monday, on the 29th, the Broadbent Area Prevention Coalition is going to be, doing a presentation for our athletes and their parents, and anybody else that's interested on teen prescription drug abuse. It's a large and growing issue in our community, and we're glad that they're going to come in and do that presentation. Obviously, a lot of the same things about treatment and seeking help that apply to prescription drug abuse apply to any other drug abuse that, that we can, we can talk about. So we're excited to have them here to do that. On the 30th is freshman first day, that's a day where we just invite the ninth graders to come to the building. They have a program, we do a little department scavenger hunt, where they go to the science department, and do some, some fun science, which what science isn't fun? And they go around, and they do various activities. We'll take the picture in the yearbook, where they'll put the 2020, and then in four years, we'll take the picture again, and so it'll become the opening and closing of the yearbook. And that's a tradition we started a few years ago, it's kind of neat to see. And, you know, right now, we're looking at 219 incoming freshmen, which is great. And they've already started to trickle in, I've met a few of them, given many tours. The ones that come from BAMS are like, yeah, I already know my way around. Ones from smaller schools, we spend some time, we take their schedule, we walk from class to class, so they can kind of see where they're going to go. On the evening of the 30th, we are going to give the ninth graders and their parents a Chromebook to use for four years. We started this program three years ago, it's been very successful. You know, hats off to Bob Whitberg, George Verniger, and Karen Trinowski, who really spearhead this, this process, and they've done a fine job getting ready for this year as well. You know, I was hoping for this meeting to have a little bit of information for the board about mortality of Chromebooks over the three, over the previous two years, but I couldn't get that from Bob because he was busy doing other stuff. I'm hoping to have that for you soon. We're also kind of using some other Chromebooks, and we're going to be able to loan Chromebooks for the year to our seniors. And, you know, we borrowed some from some departments, you know, Keith has had some that they're not going to use for a little while, so we're really excited to actually have some Chromebooks that, so now all of our students will have a Chromebook, which is very exciting. It's a dream that we've had for a long time, so we're, we're very happy. On the 31st, we welcome all students, grades nine through 12, for the 2016-17 school year. I'm hoping that the board will be there that day, at various entrances.
We have that, as later on under new business.
Oh, good, good.
Start of school.
Great, because that means a lot to our students to know that the school board's here, and ready to greet them as they, as they come in the door. Finally, almost finally, on September 6th, we're having another very special presentation. We did this last year, we had a woman, and her name escapes me, she came from New Hampshire, and she does something called High and Seek, and it's a program where they set up, she sets up a teenager, a typical teenager's bedroom. And parents, not children, not just parents, are invited to attend this and walk around the bedroom and look for obvious and not-so-obvious signs of risk-taking behavior. It's incredibly educational for parents. So you take about an hour, and you go through, and even, even things as innocuous as this water bottle. There's a water bottle on the market that looks just like this, but you twist the bottom, it's got water you can drink in it, you twist the bottom, you bring it out, and there's a hidden place to keep whatever it is that you want to keep. Not likely family gold doubloons or something else. But, you know, she does that presentation, but then afterwards, she really starts to talk about how do you talk to your child if you're worried about risk-taking behavior? And so it's not a how you play gotcha with your kid, it's really how do you have those hard conversations? And how do you broach with your child that you're worried about what they may be doing in the community? And that will be on the 6th at 6:30. We're going to advertise that to BAMS, to Putney, and Dumberston as well. And, you know, we didn't do a lot of advertising last year, we had 80 people show up, so we're hoping for more this year. And earlier that day, she will do the same presentation for the faculty, so they'll get a chance to kind of see and kind of experience that. So, you know, we're, we're glad that she can return. Last but not least, we are, as the board knows, settling into our new administrative structure. Kate Margitis and Chris Day will be the assistant principals this year. And, you know, we've worked with counseling to talk about how do we more effectively use our other resources in the building to support students that need support, and we're going to continue to kind of work through that. We do not have names for the houses, because we knew if we kept purple and white, it would be confusing for people. So right now, we're calling them 9 and 11, and 10 and 12. Kate Margitis has 10th graders and 10th graders, and Chris Day has 9th graders and 11th graders. We have counselors that match with them. So if you have ideas of names, you know, we're thinking we're going to do a contest, but we do have to get away from purple and white, unfortunately, because that's, that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky? I have one thing if I can add.
Oh, sure.
That's off my.
Okay, yeah. All right. Go to the Career Center.
Thanks, sir. So this summer, we had a two-week STEM summer, Young Ladies Program, and it was very successful. We had 16 young ladies join us from mostly our area regional sending schools, which is nice to see, the middle school age level getting interested in what we have to offer at the Career Center. Some of the programs we offered were engineering, awesome math, origami, digital photography, video filming, jewelry making, wooden toys, science, and fiber arts. So we wanted to link the STEM approach to what we have to offer on a daily basis here at the Career Center to get these young ladies interested in the non-traditional types of programs that the young ladies would normally pursue. So we have, we had some great feedback from the students, and some of the feedback was we. we wish you would offer a program all summer long, we would come to the Career Center because we don't have anything else to do in our hometowns. So that may be something we're going to explore for the future and really listen to their feedback. So big thanks to Janet Cross, she was a coordinator this summer for that program and all the teachers that participated as well. Very nice job. Want to thank Robert Clark and his crew also for doing a wonderful job at the Career Center. This is the first year, I think, back in a few years, that Robert Clark's crew has maintained the tick and this portion of the Career Center in it by far is a really nice job and the teachers are going to be impressed as much as I am. So excellent job. WRCC will also be participating in professional development this Thursday and Friday and Monday. And I'll be working continuously this year with technology centers that work at SREB and our liaison, Dave Levitt. And we're going to be focusing this year on professionally-based graduation requirements and how we are going to be implementing as a Career Center to meet those goals and guidelines that the state has set forth for Career Centers. So my teachers are going to be very busy this year in regards to that. And I think we'll be in good shape by the end of the school year. They're, they're halfway there, they don't, some of them don't know it yet, but just the nature of what we do on a daily basis. I do have some new hires, been a busy summer for the Career Center and new hires and resignations as well. So I'll regrettably start with resignations for board approval. First one was Barb Vinci, our business teacher, has been with us for four years. She's taken an administrative job in a nearby school district, so I wish her well at that position. Jen Connor, our tech English teacher, has resigned a few days ago actually and regrettably, you know, I hate to see her go. She's been a great addition for many years of the Career Center, teaching our students integrated English, techno, resume writing and portfolio and she's done a great job. And the last one is Yeko Fernandez, our culinary para-instructor, has also resigned. She's chose to move back to Mexico to be closer to her parents. So I wish her well with that endeavor and we're still looking for her replacement, still adver, it's being advertised. So I'm hoping to fill that position in the next couple of weeks.
Why don't we handle the resignations first and then we'll do the appointments that you have for us? So does anybody want to?
I move that we accept, can we do all three at once?
Go for it, why not?
Accept the resignations of Barbara Vinci, Jen Connor and Yeko Fernandez with regret.
Is there a second? Second anybody, Sean? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Excellent, okay.
So for our new hires at the Career Center, our .67 horticulture position, we, I offered a job to Diane Newzo. She comes from, was from Keene with a lot of teaching experience at the middle school level and paraprofessional experience as well. So she has a great understanding of teenagers and what works well with them. Looking forward to working with her. Also, Errol Nelson will be replacing Dennis Hamilton. He has been the para-professional in forestry for the past 14 years. I feel that he's going to be a really strong candidate for that position. And James Denowitz for our .67 business position will be joining the ranks with Mary Beth Cornell up here on the second floor of the Career Center. And that's it for new appointments.
All right. Do you have a motion for that?
So move.
Okay.
Already forgotten the names.
Second.
All right, we've been seconding. Any questions about that? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Excellent. Okay, great. Anything else?
Just looking forward to the great year.
Excellent.
Other question, building trades. Just wondering what, what the major project is there? They finished the, the little?
Yes, the tiny house is 99% complete and we are looking for a buyer for that house. And we're going to be focusing on smaller projects this year, sheds and something outside of the large scale.
How do you, how are you marketing the tiny house? I mean, you just word of mouth?
Word of mouth at the moment. I've kind of acted with Jim, I forgot his, Phil.
Phil.
Realtor. So I'm working with him as well. He's going to try to find a market. It's a tiny market at the moment in the area.
You're just having to be some tiny lots of the wet stuff.
Yeah. Sean has a tiny place for that.
For that tiny house.
Yeah, silver water.
Might be an opportunity for us.
Some fruit trees.
It's actually, it's kind of nice.
That's true.
Is, is this class involved with this tiny house festival?
I've been in contact with one of the coordinators this summer. And so it's, I think it's September 4th.
Oh, it's sometime in September.
Yeah. It's laboring.
Oh, it is, I thought it was.
It's coming up very soon. So I think timing.
Right after the beginning, we're actually at the beginning of school.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. Great. Keith, you have something else?
I apologize, I had a, I had a whole list of staff changes, but most of them I've, I've updated you on. Couple notes, Jean Nolan, who was here, she took a two-year leave of absence, she's a special educator, she's returning this year. She's, trying to think of where she's been, she's been out of the country.
Last time she was in Brazil.
Yeah, I think she spent a lot of time, she's, she's been all over, but we're welcoming her back, you know her. And a technology position's been a challenge to hire. And we have multiple kind of technology roles. Daisy Frederick teaches technology, more in the maker space, hands-on, doing a lot with robotics and those kind of things. This other position was a combination teaching technology as far as basic, like digital citizenship and basic computer operation and using Google and those kind of things. And then also technology integration with the staff. It's proven to be a difficult position. Raf, what was this last name? Raf?
Raphael.
Raphael Adamak.
Thank you.
He was here for multiple years, right before I got here, resigned, left right before I came and I've had a hard time filling it, a different person each year. So this year, when I advertise it, I struggled getting applicants that, that I felt were the right fit. And eventually, and I made the decision, I'm not going to hire somebody who's not the right fit. Sometimes we make that mistake as administrators, we hope that it'll work out, doesn't, and I chose not to make that mistake this time. So I'm filling that, I've had plans, I've been actually working with Michael and Steve and trying to be creative around some other personnel we have to see if we could mix up. Eventually, filling most of those classes with Mary Linney and Haiyan Hu, the Chinese teacher. So those classes are being filled in-house and then the integration, I'm working with Mary Linney to do that. Mary is a library media specialist and a lot of schools are using their librarians and media specialists in that role of tech integration as well and kind of making that shift. She actually stepped up to the plate and said, I, I feel I'm a perfect fit for this and I think I can make this work. So I'm working with her to try to figure out the details, but essentially, what I'm telling you is that we're going to absorb that position in-house, at least for this year, going to reevaluate as we go along to see, you know, we'll come to budget time and take a look at that situation. It is an important position, but if I can fill at least tech integration with somebody in-house, I think that that is the smoothest transition for staff. So that was a, sorry, I meant to update you that before. Any questions about that? Been a long meeting, sorry.
Excellent, thank you, Keith. All right, so finished administrative reports, moving on to unfinished business. And the only thing under unfinished business we have on the agenda is some policy reviews.
And in light of summer, the amount of work that's gone to Act 46, the fact that we're missing a couple of people and have all been here since five, I would ask that we table those until next session.
Okay. So we'll move those to second, the second, so the second reading will be at our next meeting on those policies. Anything else under unfinished business that didn't make the agenda? No? Okay. So moving on to new business, really the only thing under new business, and I, I had Barb put it on there, was just the start of school and Steve mentioned it a little bit. Historically, we, as a board, as many of us as possible, have tried to be here, actually on both first days, the freshman slash seventh grade first day and on the first day of all students being here and helping to do some greeting at the doors and things like that. I know I have fun with it, just watching them drag themselves in and some of them are very excited about being here and some of them really wish they were sleeping till noon still, or later. But it's a, it's a fun thing to do. So I would encourage all board members to try to come either Tuesday and/or Wednesday next week. And usually, there's some people at the front door of the high school, some people at the front door of the middle school, some people at the bus entrance, so be kind of spread out as we get here.
So would be a couple on the 30th?
I, I've come both days and it's, you know, mostly on the 30th, you're greeting a smaller group of kids.
And what time again?
In general, age 15 to age 45.
And you can go to either internship?
Yeah, on the 30th, it'll only be the seventh graders and ninth graders in the building, typically.
Right.
So it's a smaller group of students to greet and then on the 31st, on the Wednesday, it'll be a much larger group at every entrance because there's just, everyone's here, at least hopefully. Everyone's here. So hopefully, many of you, as possible, can do that for that half hour that morning. Like I said, it's typically, it's, it's pretty fun and I think the kids get a little bit of a kick out of it and ask some questions about stuff, like who are these old people and why are they in the building if they don't work here? And then also, it's a good way too for the, I think, the faculty and the staff to see us in the building as well, which is a nice thing I do.
Fairly important.
Because I see, I know that the last couple of years when I've been at the high school entrance, I've seen a, a large portion of the high school staff just walking by me at one point or another as they're getting ready for their day and they appreciate seeing us in the building, so. If you do it, that'd be great. Got something under new business, unless somebody else has something else?
I move for you, Jen.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. And, all those in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you all for your time tonight. I know it's been a long couple of hours, but I appreciate it.